Port Orchard City Council Works Study Session for May fifteenth, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of North British France, one nation under God, equal principle, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. We're to our first item here with Mr. Bond and with the status of our comprehensive plan implementation. I think we put this on tonight's work study because we've got our retreat and we didn't want to lock down. We did a subject matter about too deeply at our retreat, so we thought we'd dive into it a little bit tonight.
Yeah, and this is kind of a two-part issue with the second item on the agenda is really the capital project-specific portion of the comprehensive plan implementation. And this first piece that I'm going to present is more of the policy comprehensive plan implementation portion of our discussion. So if you remember, and I think this was prior to the creation of our first biennial budget for the 2017-2018 budget cycle, we put together this, or we took the appendix out of the comprehensive plan and tried to provide a status update for each of the goals and policies that are listed in the comprehensive plan. And we've just provided notes as to where we are, what actions we've taken to implement each of these goals and policies. And then I'm going to talk real briefly, kind of high level, about what we've accomplished so far and what's kind of on the work plan going forward. And then if you have questions about specific goals that are in this document, I'm happy to try to facilitate a discussion about how we can better achieve those goals. But I think I would say ninety percent of these, we have done at least something to try to implement these goals. A few of the things are either listed as pending or ongoing, and those are things that we still have yet to figure out what we're going to do or figure out how we're going to achieve that. So real quickly, to tick off a list of the things that we've accomplished during this last biennial budget, which also coincides with the adoption of our 2016 comprehensive plan. One of the big things, of course, is we moved the DCD over to 720 Bay Street and created a permit center. And part of that whole process was to get permit clerks trained to take in public works, planning and building permits, and to treat each of those permits the same in terms of how they're processed, and to cross-train people so that we have redundancy and can provide better customer service. We, of course, adopted the Unified Development Code, which also included a lot of the permit processing portions of our code. We adopted architectural design standards, both a chapter dealing with single-family and duplex design, as well as more recently, the multifamily and commercial standards. We adopted a new sign code to implement a Supreme Court decision related to free speech, and that's been up and running for about a year and is actually running very smoothly. We adopted a dangerous and unfit building code that allows the city to go in and abate dangerous buildings and to recover costs associated with abatement, should we be the entity that ends up having to deal with one of those properties. We adopted the Mixed Use Pilot Program. We did a minor shoreline master program amendment to better facilitate redevelopment on the waterfront. And then more recently, we've had the Opportunity Zones Program that was designated in Port Orchard, and we've just, I think most of you were at the groundbreaking for McCormick Village Park. The big items on our to-do list for the next two years and through the end of this year are beginning our subarea planning process for our local centers. And there's going to be a budget request associated with that for at least one of those local centers. There is a zoning code update that we just started with a public participation program that we adopted at the last meeting, and that is underway, and we're looking for fall adoption or winter if things drag out. We've identified another project in the budget that needs to be tackled, and that's an update of the Parks Plan. We're currently not eligible for grant funding through RCO for future grants until we update that Parks Plan. And there's a lot of other elements or other benefits to updating the Parks Plan, including looking at our parks' impact fees and also level of service standards related to development for how much open space and what types and how many park facilities we need per capita. And then finally, we've been doing various transportation planning projects like the Bethel-Sedgwick Plan, and then there will be other projects included in the tip that Noah's going to discuss a little later in our meeting. So with that said, if you look at the twelve or so pages of the Complan Implementation Matrix, I did get an email from Councilmember Deener asking a question about seven of these goals. And so I think what I'd like to do is allow you to ask questions about where we're at with implementing some of these goals. I think the items I just presented are, you know, touch probably around half of these goals in terms of what we're doing to implement these things. But perhaps Councilmember Deener wants to start with a couple of the items that he wanted to bring up. And if any other council members have questions about these goals, I'm happy to facilitate that discussion.
Okay, sure. I don't know if you want to go through this page by page?
Sure.
Okay. So on page five, the very first row struck me as something that's important to consider. But I was curious about which subarea plan we were going to first tackle, because we have a number of centers, as everybody knows, and they all require some attention, but some are going to be more strategic than others. And so my question to Nick was, which one are we going to hit first?
So I, you know, I've looked at this, and first of all, we're putting together the zoning code right now as a precursor to doing the subarea planning, because that's our toolkit. And we need to be able to allocate these new zones and building types in this subarea plan. With that said, my goal would be to look at, or my recommendation would be to look at the Sedgwick-Bethel Plan. I think that's a really high priority, both because there's current development pressure, there's challenges related to Washdod and that being a state highway, and of course, we're just completing the Bethel-Sedgwick Corridor Plan, and so I think this would be a logical extension of that work. And my recommendation is actually that we would look into bringing on a consultant to help us with that next year, due to the number of property owners involved, the complexity of financing any sorts of those improvements, and just the manpower that it takes to do that level of outreach. I think that Carrie and I would have a, you know, it would be a big challenge for us to actually directly do that kind of outreach and facilitation while coming up with that plan. The other one that I'm recommending is the McCormick Village Urban Plan, or Master Plan, which the McCormick Communities LLC Group is actually spearheading that effort. And so we're participating and providing them feedback on the work that they're leading, because in that situation, you have one property owner controlling the area that's to be a local center versus multiple property owners. And so there still needs to be some outreach, but it's not nearly as a coordinated approach where you're having to look at the interests of each individual property owner and what they want in addition to what the community wants. So I think that's something that we can manage in-house.
What about the Sydney Pottery Corridor? I would think that that, I mean, that raises one of the top three for me also.
Are you talking at Tremont or at Sedgwick-Glenwood?
I'm talking Sedgwick-Glenwood. I'm talking like from the overpasses sixteen south.
I think that's what we're talking about, the Sedgwick and Bethel would be. There might be both centers in that, but.
I think those are two centers in our plan. You could combine them, but I think for keeping, you know, these things focused, they need to be compartmentalized a little bit. I think that that corridor is a little bit easier, because there are fewer property owners, and you don't have the needs for the supporting road network in the same way that you do for Bethel-Sedgwick to access, because all those properties extend so far south from Sedgwick to the city limits compared to being, you know, having a city limit boundary to the west and Blackjack Creek to the east. The other corridor just isn't as deep or as complex in terms of providing that level of access. I feel more comfortable doing that sort of thing in-house. And that actually may be a better exercise even for the Planning Commission as part of just applying the new zoning code and double-checking everything to make sure that it works, more so than coming up with something really grandiose.
Some of those properties along that aren't even in the city, are they?
Or right up against rural.
Right, but I just see the population in McCormick. I see that as an ideal place for retail or commercial to want to go in.
Our challenges were, you know, we'd love to do it all.
No, I really.
And we'll probably need to focus on two, three tops, you know, and to be realistic about the work plan.
Yeah, I would put that in a, you know, solidly as a third priority. And potentially, if there, now that the Opportunity Zone designation combined with tax abatement and the zoning code update, I think the South Kitsap Mall could be a candidate for redevelopment, but that's going to take a willingness on the part of the owner of that property to make it go forward. But if there was that interest, that would certainly move up as a fairly high priority as well. But we haven't really heard a lot in the way of plans for redevelopment there at this time.
There's some multifamily property right behind it, though. Awesome. It's town. Those of us here in the eighties when I was a dog.
Doesn't change anything. I didn't have any other comments on that page.
Oh, I think. The third goal, Goal 10, it says, monitor the supply and demand for available land based on this confirmation. And my question is, because your comment is the city has ample land supply. And my question is, do we have that, I mean, you're going to take care of the zoning. Do we have that supply of land zoned to meet our population growth and our commercial growth and industrial growth?
You know, without having done like a really sophisticated economic study, you know, the Buildable Lands Report looked at that and showed that based on our current zoning in critical areas, we do have sufficient land capacity. I think that the zoning code update could potentially increase that capacity to some degree. And so I do want to, you know, after we've put together this zoning code, take a look at that and see, you know, just how much have we increased our capacity so that we have that information. And that will feed into our next, you know, update of the countywide planning policies and the work at PSRC as part of Vision 2050. But, and I think related to this, there's a discussion on page six related to Goal 10 that talks about monitoring population growth and looking at reasonable measures to make sure we hit our population targets. And so I think these two kind of go hand in hand.
Well, that was my, and that was my next question. It says that we should be growing by 317 people annually to meet our goal, and we've been growing at 290. And I was wondering, is that because of the mix of properties that are being built? Because they're larger homes and not necessarily, I mean, I just wonder.
You know, I did a linear projection from 2010, and there were a couple of linears in there where we didn't grow nearly as much. I mean, I think that in the next two years, we're probably going to greatly exceed 317 people per year. And that's, you know, that's going to bring this thing right into line, I would guess, by 2020. And if it doesn't come into line by 2020, then maybe we need to look at trying to encourage a little bit more development to reach those targets.
Page five or six. Just got to the source on seven.
Page seven, yeah, Goal 7, the third row down. I just was curious about the description of what the review revision of permitting processes and our efficiencies are.
Well, I think the big efficiency, as I mentioned at the beginning, was creating the permit center and getting the clerks to where they're all operating under the same procedures. And, you know, since we've moved to the new building, we've constantly been refining our forms, our checklists, and trying to make things as streamlined as possible, and so it is a work in progress. I think really the biggest thing that we'd like to implement, and I know that Noah's going to talk at some point about our permitting, I think our technology for accounting and permitting, and the fact that we can't receipt in funds at 720 Prospect. People actually have to walk across the street with their check, make a payment, bring the receipt back to us. And so, you know, if anybody is already having a difficult time with the permitting process and you make them walk out in the rain, that's where we hear, you know, a fair number of complaints. And so that's something that I'd like to see, just in terms of streamlining the customer experience. I think that's one of the, you know, that's low-hanging fruit, for sure.
We've also, you know, gotten behind on credit permit processing. That we need to make some, you know, changes there as far as contract review and inspection to try to, you know, speed the process up, because we're seeing a considerable amount of activity, so.
Yeah, and along those same lines, we were just notified last week that Paladin has been purchased by another company, which is the same thing that happened with Springbrook. And so, you know, they're currently assuring us that there won't be a whole lot of change in our experience. But as we look at, you know, citywide asset management and accounting and software, you know, we're going to have to look at how well that works with Paladin or doesn't work with Paladin, or in the event that Paladin were to decline, that we would have a good option that would integrate with our existing system. And so that'll be something we monitor here over the next year or so.
They were purchased by somebody called The Dude?
Dude Solutions.
Where's that?
So I didn't send questions where there were low priorities, but one of them that I'm interested in, and you'll probably hear more about this during the retreat, is Goal 8. And that's where we have a strategy, or we would like to have a strategy, to assist property owners to maintain and take care or improve their properties. Typically, this goes to sidewalks and those kind of things. But that's a low priority, it's been identified as a low priority, but I'd like to see that as part of our city beautification program elevated.
I concur with that, because what I'm hearing is that it's much easier or it's much more efficient to plan for the newer areas, and I understand why, because they're easier to develop. And I almost wonder if we're leaving behind the older parts, because they're too difficult to do anything with, like the more blockable areas. I guess, and I understand that we have market forces, that people want new houses, they don't want infill, they don't want to be places where we already have infrastructure.
Well, I'm seeing a number of homes being renovated.
Well, that's the sort of thing that I don't know, if there's a way that we can encourage that. Like, you know, Hall Street, there's a great new home there that's more than the neighbors and.
I think that's Mark's address, too.
But if we could sort of get behind that in some way, because I also saw that it was a low priority. And I don't know if that's what Goal 8 was intended to address or not.
Yeah, and I actually look at that as, you know, there's a carrot and a stick, and the stick is code enforcement. And code enforcement, I think, is probably less expensive than the carrot approach to having people fix things up, because we would have to put funding or resources towards helping, you know, facilitate some kind of improvement program. And that's something, you know, I don't even have examples of what that would look like, and it would certainly be challenging and take a lot of staff resources. I know that code enforcement is stretched, you know, he's doing a huge job. He's just getting started on sign code enforcement, which he's been sending out postcards, kind of letting people know that the sign code changed, giving some time for information to get out there, and he's going and doing outreach. But that, along with a couple of dangerous building abatements every year, along with supplementing our inspection workload for building inspections, and that's, you know, that's a full-time job right there. So dealing with tall grass, I mean, that's totally complaint-driven right now. If you wanted us driving around looking for problems and writing people letters, that's additional FTE, you know, an FTE or two.
So then at the very bottom row, the very last couple lines in the strategy, you talked about this part of our center plan, identifying and establishing open space corridors and connections. And my question to Nick is, have we begun to map those out conceptually and see what those needs might look like once we get there? So we're a little ahead of the curve when it's time to.
Yeah, there's two points on that. First of all, the Blackjack Creek Restoration Plan was just completed, and that was adopted, I think, at the end of last year. And so we're still looking at what's in that, what our role is in implementing that. And so in terms of a wildlife corridor, Blackjack Creek is planned from the inlet all the way to the city limits. And it also includes Ruby Creek and some of the, you know, the other creeks further up towards Sydney and Sedgwick. Our critical areas generally, because of the, you know, our streams all, for the most part, run north-south, and you just have these natural critical area buffers that run through the city like fingers coming up from the inlet. And so I don't know that there's a whole lot of need to plan for something that is sort of predetermined by our critical areas code. I would say that if we do the Parks Plan update, I think that, you know, planning for open space and having open space requirements as part of new subdivisions, as well as park requirements for new subdivision is a way to ensure that, you know, there's supplemental green space in the city. So, you know, I think that's my number-one priority for next year, so that once McCormick Village Park is done, we can identify our next park projects and go after grants to continue funding those and bringing more parks to other parts of the city.
Page eight, I guess? I had questions about a couple of low priorities, but I don't think I'm going to.
Anybody want to discuss a Parks Board? Didn't think so.
I think it's happy to get Parks employees to maintain it.
Yeah, I think we should discuss it, even if we tell it again, but it's something that it sounds like eventually we're going to need if we have more parks dispersed throughout the city. And do we just want to have public works taking care of it, or do we want to have a consultant do it? We hear that people want it, we have seemed to want it to fund it.
I think it's just a matter of funding maintenance resources within our public works.
I agree with Nick, and I appreciate the diversity of our functions, but do we take care of our parks before we should start?
Otherwise, we just get another committee giving us a laundry list of things to accomplish.
Maybe give them tasks with hopefully some outcome represented for outcome, not just that committee puts it ahead of the table.
I'm going to advocate in the next budget for resources to do just that.
For maintenance.
Maintenance, yes, exactly. I mean, we've got McCormick Village Park coming online, we've got another segment of the pathway, you know, and other parks. And this is going to be important to, and the landscape comedians and at Tremont, they're all going to be important to keep that soon.
So on page nine, Goal 14 is the last page. I was curious about the Blackjack Creek water supply, the Ross water supply, and whether we've seen those yet and whether they dress, that's one of my concerns about some of the Blackjack, for example, bank restoration. I think we have to explain that we discussed that it hasn't been released to staff yet.
Yeah, and we were involved in the preparation of that plan, but towards the end, when they were really, you know, assembling the entire thing, we kind of dropped off in our involvement. But there is a plan for restoring the Blackjack Creek estuary and what that looks like and how it's funded. You know, I don't think that's something that the city takes the lead on, but certainly there's grant funding out there. And if the local integrating organization, LIO, wants to take the lead on that or any of the recovery groups, you know, they would obviously have to acquire property and try to make that happen. There may even be an opportunity as part of, you know, a West Bay redevelopment to do some sort of restoration. There's a handful of other projects like that, but I think the most important thing is that we're just protecting Blackjack Creek with our Green Belt designation for zoning and our Critical Areas Code, which, you know, has significant buffers along there related to both the slopes and the fish and wildlife habitat areas. As far as Ross Creek, I mean, Ross Creek, at least from sixteen down to the inlet, doesn't have a lot of development potential. And then upstream from there, you know, things are pretty well protected by our Critical Areas Code. I don't think we have as big a role to play with Ross Creek as we do for Blackjack.
Are there any sources available?
Well, I think that, you know, completing the Blackjack Creek Plan was really important, because it's prioritizing projects. And once those projects have been prioritized, you really have a much better picture in terms of the urgency for funding different projects, and that's how you end up getting on their two-year funding lists, which are usually federal funds. And I think that, you know, Saquamish, you know, definitely needs to take a leadership role in terms of these Port Orchard projects. When I worked at my previous jurisdiction in Eatonville, I mean, we had major multimillion-dollar projects every year that I was there for seven years with the Nisqually Tribe, where they were out putting large wood debris structures in the stream, removing riprap. I mean, doing all kinds of restoration projects. And that level of effort, you know, I think that in general, Port Orchard's hasn't been prioritized to the level that the stream in Eatonville had been prioritized in their restoration plan. But now that we have that information, those things should move forward a little bit more quickly.
Goal nineteen, the third row down, is a low priority, but nonetheless, I was curious, but is there any status update for that historic overlay district?
The historic overlay district?
Well, Goal nineteen, the strategy is to consider developing a waterfront historic overlay district.
You want to page that?
Yeah.
I'm looking at a different, Goal nineteen on a different page. Here we go. I'm not really sure what is meant by the waterfront historic overlay district. So I guess the reason that that says pending is because I need a little bit more guidance from council in terms of what is desired and how to prioritize that.
I had no idea what.
My guess is that that was likely, which went over from a previous plan that didn't get a D.
Sorry, the D of the overlay district.
So we didn't, if that's the case, we could have called the D of A. I think that this predates that.
Is it all good?
Yeah.
It said to consider it, so obviously nobody would have considered it.
Right.
Yeah, and I think, just one note about our zoning code update. Obviously, we're looking at the zoning all over, and for our proposed downtown mixed-use zone, one of the things that we're doing is currently, the downtown mixed-use zone has heights that go 27, 39, and 55 feet. And what we want to change that to is to have a two-story not to exceed 28 feet, a three-story not to exceed 38 feet. And so we'll have a number of stories and a maximum building height, and we're going to need to apply that on the map, generally consistent with what's currently allowed under the DOD. You know, if there's a portion of downtown that we want to apply a lower height limit to than what's currently allowed, or in some cases, we had an incentive or a system where your base height was 27 feet and you can go up to 39 if you got a conditional use permit. We need to pick one or the other and not have the jump through an additional hoop to get height or, you know, basically buy your extra height.
But there was a list of amendments that we could do.
Yeah, so I think that'll be looked at as part of the zoning. That'll be looked at as part of the zoning code.
Should we ask Goal nineteen, is that what you're asking?
Well, we can't change, yes, we can't change this.
You can amend your Complan, though. I mean, if that goal is outdated, we can put it on the list to be considered for removal next year.
Seems like where we can do that, we show.
Could you guys please pull the microphones closer? Some of you are putting your hands and putting your mouth on the mic.
That was page ten?
Page ten, second from the bottom, or Goal five. Review or revise development regulations as necessary to promote healthy living opportunities. And I was, I think Nick explained that that's going to be more integral to the subarea planning when we get there, and then we can look at.
Yeah, it'll be part of the subarea planning, but it'll also be part of our zoning code update. And one of the things that we're looking at is, for instance, our current parking standards for a single-family house, you have to provide two parking spaces. our current parking standards for a single-family house, you have to provide two parking spaces. And in some neighborhoods, that's plenty because there's on-street parking, but in other areas, it's, it's not good because there's no off, on-street parking. Likewise, in some areas, there's no sidewalks, and so your only option for getting to that house, should you have to park somewhere around the corner, is, you know, you don't have an opportunity to walk, and so what I'd like to do is create parking standards that look at the availability of on-street parking and sidewalks to help determine how many parking spaces you have to provide for a particular use, and so that we're actually creating an incentive, if somebody doesn't have enough room to provide that parking, they get a parking reduction only if they provide the sidewalks and the on-street parking lane within the right-of-way, and maybe it's a way for our right-of-way to get built out as a complete street, and so we can create kind of an incentive where, look, for a single-family house, you got to provide four parking spaces if you don't have on-street parking with sidewalks, but if you build a parking lane, you can reduce that and not have, not have to provide as much parking.
So goal nineteen, mid-page, is parking lot regulations, revisions, and design standards, and I, I'd be really excited to see the city's next iteration of parking standards include more greenscape and stormwater treatment features, because I think parking lots are really, it's the first experience you have with a business, they can, they can look nice, they can have good functions, good functionality, and so I'd like to make sure that the parking standards for, for new parking lots are, and I think Nick said those.
Yeah, and, and actually, based on your description right now, I mean, that was part of the architectural design standards, was those parking lot rows and kind of how you design your parking lot to have more green space, whether it's for stormwater infiltration or just for aesthetics.
I would just caution that we need to make sure that the standards are flexible depending upon situation. This is an example, granted, it's looking at the possibility of like, in that case you want capital, but you don't want water opportunity pulled down, so just, I only raise that that there needs to be a bit of flexibility or considerations for the environment that is being built, whether it's next to a creek or whatever.
Then I asked about goal ten, the Kitsap County Bicycle Facilities Plan, and I think, Nick, you said that, that appears to be a remnant plan that's pretty old.
I think it's from two thousand and three. We've actually been relying on the NACTO standards, which is an, I don't know what that stands for, but whenever we have questions about bike design, there's a national standard for, for how you lay things out, it's similar to ADA or, you know, for sidewalk standards, and it's a good resource to go to, and we should probably adopt it into our public works standards.
Anything else on twelve? Number thirteen. Talking about capital facilities, more representation.
I've got nothing for you, except to say that, that, thank you, Nick, for, for putting this together for us, I think this is a good annual exercise that, that every jurisdiction should do, it's the comprehensive plan, it's the most transparent, and what we need to do moving forward, so thank you.
That's really what the next presentation is about, is progress, comprehensive planning, having capital facilities elements, and, you know, the exceptional job you, the president is about to give us, showing where, where we're at and, and all the good work we're doing, so that.
Can we just go forward, because we, we're sitting here, Nick, we've all, we've talked about that, the border, and center planning, and, and so on, thinking that there's, there's one that's not as high as far as the maintenance, but there's a potential, and that's the treatment for, I know when we first put in the project, yeah, that four leads up to the Boulevard, we have an awful lot of pressure on this for development, commercial development, you know, along that quarter, and we suspect that that's going to return once we finish piece that portion of, of treatment, so I just, I raise that as something that we should be prepared for as much as we can, or think about as much as we can, because I think there's redevelopment opportunities for residential, I think of the horse park area, the flower street, that is, could be surprising for residential redevelopment.
And that falls into our opportunities, so there.
Yeah, exactly, so I just, I throw that out as a table, this is something to consider, and I appreciate what the mayor says, I'm glad to be able to do it all, but we have to prioritize, but I just think that we're probably going to start seeing, there are a lot of pressure to develop and redevelop one quarter to finish.
I think too, our form-based code could help with that redevelopment, of course, park area, where maybe it's going to make sense to give some of that, you know, the town home, you know, the duplex, the triplex, the mix, you know, that we're not getting because our code is, is over-restricted in some ways.
Thank you.
Very well.
All right, well, good evening, council members and mayor, for the record, Noah Crocker, finance director for the city of Port Orchard. So we get, we began today's study session with D C Director Bond, providing an overview of the goals of the comp plan and implementation status. Every goal in table you highlighted, that policy actions, and he trusted, kind of gave us a real good overview of where we're at. Now we're going to build on that foundation by reviewing all the projects identified in the various comp plans, in the sewer, water, parks, and transportation, and we're going to review the updated cost estimates and project timelines. The goal of this presentation is to walk away with a succinct, clear understanding of all the projects we have on the books, the estimated costs, and timelines to completion. It's important to know that the city conducted a process, including the planning department, public works department, and finance department, to evaluate and make the recommendations at the conclusion of this presentation. Again, I think it's important to lay out this out as a high level, that there, there was a process that the city went through to get to, to this point. Council set the vision, mission, and goals for the city, the mayor directs the staff to develop plans to meet those visions, missions, and goals, staff brings back these plans, and the mayor and council authorizes the budget to complete the plans and projects, including adopting new revenue streams to pay for the projects. Staff will then go forth and carry out the projects and execute. So much of the work that we're going to see today has already been completely done, and we're at the stage now of reviewing the work that council and mayor have already done and updating the information for the new projects and plans. Additionally, I printed out the pack of the presentation for each of you to take home today, because again, I was hoping this would continue with what the theme was, is anticipation of the retreat, and all the things that you guys want to talk about, that you have some material to take home and kind of noodle on over the next couple days before the retreat. Not sure where to aim this thing now.
Is that on?
Should be. There we go, okay. So first, we're going to be walking through the timelines on the expenditure plans associated with each of the comp plans, again, and try to roll this information up to a higher policy level. The updates on these slides put together, again, with assistance of the public works department and the planning department. And so we're going to take them one at a time, and then we'll review them all comprehensively. The projects are coming directly, again, from the comp plans, which our bodies have worked on to themselves, so on this slide here, we're viewing the sewer comp plan, which is identifying seven different sewer projects spanning the time of twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-three. Again, you should be very, fairly familiar with most of these projects, and again, I would encourage you to review this material kind of over the next couple days, if you have further questions on what these projects are and the timelines. Moving on to the next slide, I'm hoping this slide really captures a lot of the elements of the time and cost. This slide identifies the latest cost estimates for each project and the expenditure plan for those projects over the years of eighteen through twenty twenty-three. I provide a summary box, and you'll notice this, for each of the comp plan reviews, a summary box in the top left that hopefully identifies the key takeaway. For this slide, the key takeaway is that during the nineteen and twenty-twenty biennial budget coming up, we expect to have eight point two million dollars in costs for sewer comp plan-related projects. Additionally, these represent five major sewer projects being managed. I do want to note, I have there a little footnote there, that the eight point two million dollars does include a reappraisal of the monies in twenty eighteen. Okay, where we're at today, I don't know how much of these projects will, can be completed by the time we get to the budget, but we will true those numbers up for budget purposes of twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, but I wanted to give you a large number, at least a number that we think that if today we had to reaproporate in dollars, what would that look like?
How's your blood pressure right now, Mark?
Just pretty high.
And we know that that McCormick constation two, we have a commitment to have that done in twenty nineteen.
By the end of twenty nineteen, it's got to be done.
Correct, correct.
And the Marina constation, it's, oh my God, if we don't.
Yeah, that's inaccurate, too.
Yeah, and, and you'll notice up here, although McCormick one does not have dollars associated with that project, there is still city resources being used to manage that project, so I kept it on the timeline as far as project management. Again, I've removed the dollars from here because now we have an agreement with the developer to go forth and do that work, but there still is an element of city resources being used to manage that project review, plans, and work with the developer. So moving on to the water projects, again, the two main, two primary projects that we see in this water timeline are for well nine and well thirteen. The top two rows represent kind of ongoing maintenance water projects that we need to do year in and year out. You say water? Yeah, okay. Again, we're identifying the latest cost estimates for each of the projects on this expenditure plan. For the water projects, again, the key takeaways for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty biennial budget coming up, we expect roughly nine point seven million dollars worth of costs, six water projects being managed, and again, this includes a reappraisal for twenty eighteen. Additionally, some of the outer-year projects, oh, wrong button, some of the outer-year projects in here aren't necessarily identified as being funded by the city, but again, I'm simply trying to reflect all the projects that are identified in the comp plan and the estimated costs of those projects. So nine point seven million dollars, six projects for the water coming up. Now, stormwater, I didn't know this until we started meeting as a team, but stormwater has a comp plan itself, and as I started to put together these timelines and dollar amounts with the team, we put it out there for the team review, and public works department said, we do not feel comfortable with what you're putting out there, Noah, and so as we started to talk through about why that is, I want to make sure I capture that in a real summary level, and what we discussed was that the current stormwater plan, capital plan, is inadequate for planning and budgeting for the following reasons. It's an outdated plan comprised mainly historical projects, the stormwater permitting and regulations have changed dramatically since the plan was adopted, I think it was in two thousand or two thousand and five, unless Mark?
Two thousand and nine, when I first came here.
Changed managers.
It was, it was mandatory, we were doing the minimum compliance mandatory, it was first, it was setting up the utility, it was a big part, so the comprehensive plan wasn't very robust, so this is really just a moment, moment, new leadership, changes in the regulations, a fresh chance to really look at our capital projects.
Yeah, yeah, and so, I mean, it was a good conversation, again, because I, I didn't know anything, I'm new, I looked at the stormwater capital plan, said, okay, we all have projects identified, we have dollar amounts, looks fine, we'll put it in the charts, and as we started walking through here, it became real apparent that this is an outdated plan, and that rather than work towards funding the capital plan from that, what public works recommended is, what we'd rather see happen is work towards budgeting in this next coming budget for two things, really to have that work redone and actually develop a, a good comp plan for stormwater projects, focusing on identifying standalone stormwater projects, and then identifying stormwater projects that are part of transportation and other related sewer projects. Again, something that I thought was interesting that came out of our discussions is that stormwater is a different animal than, than streets or sewer because of its very nature, so there are some stormwater projects that can be standalone and large projects, and we should delineate those from those stormwater projects that are a part of another project, a transportation project, a park project, that there's some element of stormwater work that has to be done, and funding needs to be allocated for that project, kind of has multiple facets to it. So again, talking about the, the work that public works presented with that we'd update, identify the standalone stormwater projects, and those projects that are kind of teamed up with transportation and other projects.
So I guess a good example would be Tremont is, it's a capital project, there's no drainage water quality mitigation in Tremont, we never had to look at this Tremont project, we want to enhance alcohol mediation collection demand. On the other side of that is, if you look at the Sydney from Tremont South, not the southern part of Flower, developing a regional storm drainage facility so that we can do complete streets up there, that would be, that's storm, definitely storm related announce.
That's a Stan, Stanmore project, down, the downtown flooding.
Downtown handling.
So how do we update that stormwater?
We're just going to propose an amendment.
Yeah, so we, we talked about a couple of different things, we talked about taking, kind of contracting out for the work to be done as one method, and again, the twenty nineteen, twenty budget, what would the ask be, you know, funds to consul, hire a consultant to come in and do that stormwater work, and we also talked about, could it be done in-house? Is this some type of work that could be done in-house? So I don't know if public works is ready to kind of come forth with a recommendation, but we talked about both, and the pros and cons of each, but what I walked away with is that what we really need to do is focus on updating the plan however we get there in order to then fund our dollars for that.
Part of that, explaining the budget will have some sort of a request to update this plan, whether it's a consultant or we're doing something to give it to our.
Well, this is something that, that, something that stormwater, you know, would be fun.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I guess my last question would be similar to the comment on update, are our clients making available, is there much money out there for stormwater problems, grant money?
It's the, the LIO that we participate in, and no.
Just here, I mean, it isn't like, like CARE CCA, if it's a way of funding or, unless something happens around the city, there's, it's, it really is kind of.
Public Works trust fund, available, something like that, so if there are companies that are stressed on.
Yes, I, I think the bigger question is, is it's great when we get this grant money and we, you and I staff to kind of get the funds, but then to manage the funds after that, or actually get the projects, and then they're still going to come down to staffing. I mean, I, every day I get the tiger grant, or I get the public works trust fund, or these other programs out there, and I look at them, and I'm thinking, this is great, I should apply for this, and it's like, no, I should probably try to get it done while we're there. It's a bit of a.
And I'm just saying that, but more emphasis on making sure we get this updated plan, because with an updated plan, there is a.
Yes, yes.
With plans, we're going to go out without plans, or, or throwing darts, that's, that's usually not successful, but.
Well, this requires to look at the fees that we're charging for stormwater, I think we should do the half and ounces, because remember, we, probably this last launch year, half and ounces was, we did a couple comprehensive.
I, I'm not giving up, I think right now, the fund is one.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, and I think we've got enough, we definitely have enough money to fund a study, you know, and add a plant, and, you know, how we go about that, we'll, we'll figure out, but I think right.
In the S and M, just so that we know what it's suggesting, like, if that, or, or I mean, it's not that much if you're doing a comprehensive plan update to just do that at half and ounces.
Mostly this day, you know, we've got the stormwater fee to charge everyone to get something done in the stormwater world. And we really have to, to swap streets and apply for regulations, so.
Tremont's.
And Tremont's has large stormwater, yeah.
And we've got the Indianapolis streets, you know, plan. We're, so we're, we need plans and, you know, to, you know, implement projects. We don't have any plans.
Citizen, they're getting something for that one, to get some kind of plan or anything.
Yeah, it can't, so, you know. And we're doing a lot in, unless it discharge, detection, elimination, I mean, there are things that are happening.
But we can do better, and that's, that's what we're saying is, we, our plan, our, our plan isn't what it should be, and we need to relook at it, and that's, that's what the recommendation is, is to look at the plan and, you know, funds the projects.
Yeah, and I think it's important, the message to the public is that, you know, we're taking a moment to pause and really rethink what we put in the plan, rather than go forward and just start throwing money at problems that we're not sure we've fully vetted, so. Next plan, parks and facilities project timeline. So we have two of the parks you recognize up there, McCormick Park and Rockwell Park. McCormick, again, we expect to be done this year, Rockwell by the end twenty nineteen. And then we've added the Marina Park expansion up here as well as City Hall.
I think McCormick Park was in nineteen.
It's gotta be done this year.
Yeah.
So that, contract, then we, it's probably an entire, two hundred and twenty days.
So again, our, the key takeaway is the small box on this screen, again, four point three million dollars of park and facilities costs, planned for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget. Again, on the, for this one, I'm really emphasizing the caveat that this includes the twenty eighteen reapropriation. Again, when we talk about the McCormick Park, again, we fully expect that to be done this year, even though I'm showing any of the numbers here.
And the City Hall is just really, we don't have the staff to, you know, we got an energy audit, we've been told what our efficiencies are. It's time next year to go out and hire consultants to clear our bid specs together and start picking away at those projects. Our roof siding, our windows, you know, we dodged a bullet here, we, you know, we opened up some wall. We got windows that leak and the floors get wet, and we opened up a couple of walls, confirmed we don't have black hole or anything in the walls. We go another ten years, not addressing water coming into the building, we'll have serious problems. And it's, it's time for us to address this stuff.
Be North Flashmark.
Slipping slides in the hall here.
All right, so moving on. Now, this one, I had to break up a little bit because it's transportation. And I want to highlight what I broke up exactly, because again, this is all the projects on the new updated six-year tip. And I separated this by identifying capital on the far left here versus kind of annual ongoing maintenance. And that's how I'll talk about the dollars in the next two slides as well. One will be for capital on the six-year tip, and one will be for the maintenance on the six-year tip. But you can see a lot of the major projects are on here, and it's a big list of transportation related projects. All right, that one looks right. So on the capital, again, the key takeaway is for the nineteen, twenty, twenty biennial budget, we're expecting nineteen point two million dollars of transportation investment. Ten projects being managed, big dollars, big projects coming up here in nineteen, twenty. Again, caveat, twenty eighteen is gonna be reapropriated, we'll true that up as we actually get to the budget. On the maintenance front, again, we expect roughly two million dollars in costs, and we.
And we should say this is the proposed comp plan amendment that's going to the planning commission as part of our, our annual update of the six-year tip. So this may look a little different than what you've seen most recently.
Yeah, well, when I'm looking at it, I see design and.
Design for.
For Bethel.
Well, Bethel design, and then we've got, okay, we do have the Anderson Hill Roundabout, and then we've got Clifton Road design, and Clifton Figgly design, and then.
Three of those, three of those design projects are one, or would be one design project, they've just been broken out because that's how they're in our plan.
I'm just not seeing construction, I'm not seeing anything that's going to, yeah.
In eighteen and nineteen, we're gonna finish up Tremont.
But that's a very bad.
You know, pedestrian path, we just can't manage anymore projects.
Yeah, no, I, I know, but it would seem like in six years, that at some point, we're going to be able to do something.
So there's two little.
We do like sand or single, standalone project, but no, there's, there's just.
I think the idea is that if we have a sixty percent design for a project and then we go to PSRC and ask for funding, then we move that construction project into our six-year tip and go after that grant money. But in the absence of, of plans or having a shovel-ready project, you know, we're less likely to, it's harder to fund a design project that you haven't fully baked.
The takeaway with Tremont was, we don't, we don't want to take federal money for a design, so we're gonna, we're gonna get some design.
No, I appreciate that, but what we're aware of is the funding cycle only comes around every so many years. Now, we need to be ready when that cycle comes around, that we can apply for the construction money.
We have, we have a right-of-way phase that we have to go through as well, if we're gonna do a P E plus one. So, yeah, that's why we gotta get the design done, at least at the level that we have identified right-of-way and then go through a right-of-way phase. Then you got the ECS, NEPA.
And all I'm trying to say is, is that there are time buckets that we can ask for money. And if, if, if we're not organized, it's gonna slip by and there's gonna be an every two-year delay before we can ask for that. So we just need to be cognizant of that.
And that's why we, that's the exact reason why we did the change order, which is shape our jewel, have them expand their design to include the right-of-way information and the A P E, very potential effect.
So that we're, that's, I think that's what we're trying to do, is lay the groundwork. So, so that we're ready for those funding cycles, so we've got designs, we know what the right-of-way is, and then we can, you know.
Right, and then at some point, we decide, are we gonna ask for federal money or are we gonna ask for T I B money? Or are we going to have our projects in some sort of, again, strategic timeline? So that if the Olympia comes through with another funding plan, these are, we can take it to our reps and say, these are the things we need in there. Because I think it's pretty obvious that connecting Washington did not meet the needs of the entire state. That not everybody was ready with their projects. And it's, it's just like when they did the nickel pack, they had to come back and get more. And so I would expect within the next two or three sessions, they're gonna be hard looking at, at that camp.
And our, and our board order studies are, I believe, laying the groundwork.
For them, which is, we want to maximize the opportunity ones there.
Absolutely.
I guess while we're on the subject, I, I should introduce you, the, the one new thing that's on this list that you haven't talked about before are the three old Clifton projects, and what we're proposing to do is to go out for design of the Clifton corridor, basically from McCormick Woods Drive to Figgly, including the campus Parkway and Figgly Road Roundabouts. You have McCormick Communities LLC is master planning McCormick North right now. And so, and then plus, we've had a couple of high school measures on the, on the ballot. But at some point, that school project is going to go, and that intersection improvement needs to be, we need to have a better idea of what that looks like, and so there's an opportunity for us to potentially, this, this is one of the opportunities where the government can play a role in encouraging something to happen. And so I think if we provide the developers with what is needed, you know, then the developers can potentially build some of this and, and potentially make an agreement with the school district to make these projects happen.
Who's responsible for Clifton from Highway sixteen intersection to McCormick Woods?
It's in the county.
It's ours up to.
The industrial park.
Just past the industrial park, and it's the county, just past.
To Anderson Hill.
Or the Anderson, and then the county's Anderson, yeah, it's, it's a bit complicated. We have trouble, it's snow falling, we gotta put our blade, put it down. No. But we actually agree that we do Clifton and the county and Anderson, we are part of Anderson. I guess a quick comment, Nick, just from a cash flow standpoint. So for the Tremont, the two Tremont items, that adds up to fifteen million. From a cash flow perspective, there's actually three million in construction administration, so that's actually eighteen million total. So there's additional three million in there that's associated with the construction administration, so just from a cash flow standpoint.
Well, and this doesn't include any costs that were incurred during twenty seventeen, so this is really looking forward from twenty eighteen now.
Well, no, that's, that's the construction.
We're just telling you what's the comprehensive plan. We still haven't figured out.
The Virgerate Man.
I wonder if it's.
So there's three million dollars.
Yeah, it's a big number.
Did you got fifteen here, there's actually three more million in those.
Yeah, and I think, I think it shows up in twenty seventeen. McCormick, your plan.
Which is about.
Oh, shit.
Asia's up, sure, it would be to do.
He's gonna true it up the end of the budget.
Yeah.
And then there's a million dollars in the right-of-way for S A Street that we still have in the bucket, that we have to spend on this. You have the two hundred and three hundred thousand, that's actually.
So it sounds like there's some work, we don't need any leads here, it's work, it's open to be done.
Yeah, so moving on, so on the maintenance side, again, we're expecting twenty million dollars of maintenance costs. And I call it citywide projects because it's not specific to a particular street. It is annual pavement preservation, annual sidewalks, ADNA upgrades, annual pavement management system projects.
What's the difference between annual pavement management projects and annual pavement maintenance projects? One and three.
One and three, annual pavement maintenance.
That's management system, so that's the P M S and implementing what's in the P M S, as opposed to what we currently budget annually, which is a fixed amount for pothole repair, I think.
But they're both essentially repaving our streets.
One of them is a strategic plan and the other one is kind of a fund for fixing potholes.
Potholes and crank out some patches.
So if you wanna look at how much we plan to spend, we hope to spend on repaving city streets, you add those two together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think it's important to note at this point, we haven't identified the funding to complete all these projects, right? Simply showing what's in the comp plans, what we're anticipating. And then rather, we'll be working on that body of work over the next couple of months, part of budgeting to actually identify the different funding sources and what can we realistically bring forward to fund and complete, in particular in the transportation. A little more comfortable in the water, sewer front, park front, transportation is a little more tricky.
And Tremont, maybe people back in percent of Tremont over like five hundred, what, what was that?
I think that was from the bridge to.
Oh, that was, that was from, from the bridge, when we were looking, it's in our comprehensive. That's just to extend and widen the existing, or it's not, you know, sidewalks, curb bike lanes, right-of-way acquisitions, it's just a, it's an overlay like we did.
And that, that five hundred thousand for the, um, thing that management system. I remember that that report had a large.
Oh, it was like, not, had an unknown.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It was like, they were saying annually, nine to five, is what we should be.
To maintain seventy-six average.
So, so again, I would encourage you guys to take this material home, kind of identify those areas you have questions. Very specific ones, we can bring in other resources like Mike to answer, how'd you come up with this number, what are you guys thinking? Again, a lot of this is gonna flush out as we kind of develop the budget over the coming months.
A big part of this exercise too is just, you know, we talked about all these projects, but they're, they're, here, here they are, and here's what's coming up here.
Yeah, that's correct, and.
It's exciting and scary.
So so far, we've gone through each individual kind of a classification. The next two slides, I'm gonna pull them all together, and I did that for a very specific purpose. I wanted to provide a clear perspective of the workload that mayor and staff have for completing all our comp and projects. So first, look at the timelines. Again, this chart represents all the comp plan timelines that we just went through today, water, sewer, parks, and transportation. And I think it does a really good job of visually representing that we do have a lot of projects going on in the city over the next four years.
I was hoping to be able to carry the page, and we did, but even there, it's too small.
And the next slide, again, continuing to try to keep it a high level, the total project costs of all these different comp plans is roughly forty-three million dollars in twenty-four plus projects, again, over the nineteen and twenty twenty biennial budget. Big dollars, big projects, a lot of work going on here at the city with our current comp plan projects. And that'll lead me to the last slide.
Stop there for a second, did you carry maybe some like eighteen expenditures into those totals?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
So eighteen, nineteen, twenty, not just nineteen?
Yeah, no, so this is a big number, again, once we kind of get further along.
Say in nineteen, twenty, but it doesn't, you have to throw all Tremont there to get.
There was aspects on the previous slides that said, budget carryover, eighteen, twelve, eleven.
Yes, yeah, yeah. And again, I did that intentionally, because if you recall, presentation with a couple of months ago, kind of where are we at twenty seventeen? What projects have we completed? Where are we at? There was a whole lot of projects that we hadn't got to yet. So we're in the process of completing those, I don't know where we're gonna be at with those expenditures.
Might be helpful to add one or more slide prior to the work study, and then obviously as we get into budgeting, but to look at the totals of all of these different buckets, sewer, water, parks, transportation, storm, by year, someone by year. Because like, if you go through right now and look what is on, I know this is just comprehensive plan projects, but twenty nineteen is gonna be busier than twenty eighteen. And you have so many projects in twenty nineteen versus what you're appearing to twenty twenty. So from a cash flow perspective and a resource perspective, we may have to look at shifting some of those around, because it's nineteen months. Crazy.
Yeah, but a lot of it is, there are contracts we're awarded, we're, we're doing it.
Some of it is, yeah, some of it is.
And, and the other big one that we haven't is, we're contract, we, we have contract obligations to do that flow station, so.
Yeah, no, there's a couple, but there's a lot of money here that are, are obligated, so just to understand what that looks like from a budgeting perspective and more importantly, from a human resources perspective.
It looks, the way it looks, really scary.
Yeah.
So, yeah, absolutely. So this last slide, again, I wanted to reflect the work the team did as we gathered information, had discussions, summarize the key takeaways from, from this exercise. And as a city, we really want to be working towards the same outcomes, and, and the team's recommendations reflect those kind of drivers. We think that to maximize the return on investment, and in particular, as Sean's pointing out, city resources, staff recommend folks on completing, completing the prioritized comprehensive plan project lists. The finance department will budget against this comprehensive plan for nineteen, twenty, twenty biennial budget. Third point, which is an important one, no new projects outside this comprehensive plan should be considered at this time.
I was gonna say, is that directed to the mayor?
I think the mayor suggested that bullet points, and I agreed. But I would say that the city will maintain a list of new projects which carries status of low priority and can be revaluated should any of the higher project priorities slip. If there's a way to fit some of these lower priorities in, let's keep, maintain that list. But let's really focus on this comp plan and completing it and get some real wins. And then lastly, city staff will report back to the mayor and council on quarterly basis and project staff's updates as we go forward and actually complete some of this work. Again, these recommendations come from the mayor, city staff, and myself, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts. Again, I think key bullet points for us, that I was hoping to walk away with, is that, get some heads nodding, that yes, you would like finance to work towards developing the capital budget measured against the comp plan as we kind of lay it out here. Recognizing that as we start to identify the funding sources, we'll have those conversations about which projects we can afford realistically to fund.
And I would add to that, that anything that we don't fund, we're gonna need a shift in our comprehensive plan. And so it potentially requires a comprehensive plan amendment at the time that we adopt our budget.
So solid funding. So soft funding. Yes.
And staff.
Yeah. And again, and like I say, the way I started this conversation, it really comes from the vision, the mission that the council sets forth, you know, directs the mayor to develop some plans. Plan department, bring back the plans, we do that, you guys adopt budgets. And here we're at the point of reviewing all that work and saying, okay, what can we legitimately go forward and fund and do, and what is our strategy as a city to do in that? We all should be working on the same playbook. I point to the comprehensive plan because it's something we can all agree on and point to and go back over. It's a good source document for us and finance and planning and public perks to work from. And, and most importantly, from this presentation, we have a lot of dollars on the books already, a lot of projects on the books already. Let's allow the stats can go forward and complete those projects.
I guess my, the only part of the structure that is the first part is separate, but I would classify it as making some of that street repayment that's more of a, in my mind, maybe it's a little capital improvements for our streets, I wish it are, but the rest of these are capital projects. I just have trouble.
It's in our comprehensive.
Yeah, mine, I don't care if it's a comprehensive, I just try to, you know, some of this will be funded out of our operating, some of it will be funded out of grants and whatever other opportunities it might be available.
Yeah, and transport- transportation is, is the most difficult to find, all the funding mechanisms work. I mean, if you think about Tremont, for example, the different funding solutions we have for that, and when you apply that to the ten, twelve different projects we have there, thinking long term, where are we gonna be at? We're at design, gotta get the design before we can apply for a grant. It is, it is a challenge. And the maintenance projects, you can't use capital dollars for, so we talked about using bond proceeds or refund, well, you can't use capital dollars for maintenance projects. So where's the funding source gonna come from? Your street fund, your general fund.
Sources of available preservation.
Right.
CPR.
Challenge is, is our score, well, we don't think it's that good.
That's the problem, is when you put that project up against a capital project where you're including capacity or whatever.
And our seventy-six is, believe it or not, is good.
Plus you have to decide if you're gonna, if that's a wise. I know that kids, I had lunch with the county engineer yesterday, and, you know, they have in-house design survey. And they have a grinding machine, they have, you know, so they can do all their preservation, it's completely in-house. They design it, they estimate it, and their crews do the work. I mean, that's quite, honestly, they have, they do most of it, but they're doing a lot of chips here.
And they have county road funding.
And they have county road funding.
And that, you know, and that's a big, you know, I don't wanna, that is a huge difference between a bigger city and a smaller city or city and a county, whereas as we found, to try to get a set of plans that are ad ready, where you get an equitable bid, there's a lot of work to get to that point. And, you know, we're just not there. We're having, so we're spending a lot of our money, and it's frustrating. We're spending a lot of our money just to come up with a set of plans that we can get equitable bids. And.
Well, you're sort of getting the, the, the personal off ground. That is always.
So, yeah.
But I'd like to compliment you, I'll, I'll be there. The, um, company that's actually set up in the street, I mean, it's not just a wish list. And that, and it used to be, it used to be, and so, um, our council and our planning, our planning commission understand this is not a wish list. It's actually, you know.
It's your way.
It's the work, it's our work.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
And I can commend all the staff. I mean, this is, this is a work.
I've never seen a whole elephant drill down to nine pages. It's about, it's about the three.
Of course, the fight is still pretty big.
Yeah, exactly.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Ready to move on to the next item? Small cell. Bond.
All right. So this issue has evolved a little bit since it was put into your packet because we received a, a pretty substantial comment letter yesterday, and there's some members of our audience here tonight that are stakeholders in this process. Just to recap of how this ordinance came about, I think in September or October of last year, we brought the issue to council, council authorized Lighthouse to do some work outside of their normal services agreement. And they had, they have a partner with their firm that really knows federal telecommunications law very well. And so he worked with me to help develop this, and we've been refining it over the last couple of months based on the initial draft that I got towards the beginning of the year. I'm going to, at this point, just real high level, if you have specific questions about the ordinance, feel free to ask them, but generally what we've tried to do here is to create a permit process for small cell antennas that is very similar to our other permit processes. There are some differences because of federal law, and you'll see a lot of things like timelines and, and other things that deviate from our other permits. And that was the first thing that my permit clerk said is really we have to do a thirty day determination of complete application rather than twenty-eight for everything else. And that's because of, of differences in federal law. I think the, the way that this ordinance is set up is, is it requires that a master use permit or a franchise agreement be sought by anybody wishing to put one or, you know, forty small cell antennas within the city. And the idea is that they're going to piggyback on existing poles, either owned by the city or PSE or any other provider who has that sort of infrastructure in the right of way where an antenna could be co-located with an existing pole or, or on a new pole. Once the franchise agreement has been obtained, then we have a very simple process for the review and issuance of small cell permits that meets federal timelines, and so they submit their application with their plans. We review them and agree to turn them around in a certain period of time. And then, of course, we have standards for what these things are supposed to look like. And as you can guess, the standards for what these things are supposed to look like, I think, based on the comments that we received, there's some differences between what PSE wants on their poles, what the city wants in terms of aesthetics, and what is technologically feasible from the, from the industry. And so we have a list of things that we haven't fully had time to digest, and we're going to suggest that we take those issues to the land use committee for a, a little bit more discussion, to really figure out what the city's preferences are and, and how much we're willing to give on, on some of these standards for how tall an antenna can be extended above an existing pole height. I think we allowed six feet, the industry, and PSE apparently requires a greater separation from the top of the pole to the antenna than what we were willing to give. And so we need to look at those nuts and bolts, design issues, and potentially have some stakeholder meetings. So my hope when I put this on the agenda was that we'd be ready to, to move this thing forward for action, and then since I've received these comments, I realize we have a bit more work to do on ironing out some of the finer details. And we're going to, to continue working on that, so I, I wouldn't expect to have this back to you before the end of June.
You gonna bring it back to the work study again?
Um, yeah, potentially. I think, I think once we have this in a final form, it, it will be worth discussing specifically those design standards and what things are gonna look like. I think that's what's most important to all of you. But based on what we've presented here, if you have any questions or comments, you know, I'd like to hear from you and, and we can bring that information to the discussion with the land use committee.
When, when this first came up, in the discussion, you know, I'd say pictures work a thousand words, but you had, had some examples, and that would be very helpful to be able to look at that and say, hey, this, this is what it looks like, you know, so many feet, this is, you know, potential.
Yeah.
I'd appreciate it, we could have some.
And I.
Some media with it.
And I did request, and at least one picture was provided with the comments, but I would like, were they're proposing a deviation, I would like to see what that deviation looks like in every instance, and so I'm hoping that the, the stakeholders can bring us that information and examples so that we understand, you know, really what this, what the change looks like.
Thank you. Another important discussion, whether it happens at land use or it happens at a work study, is just to better understand, you know, why this is necessary, right? And how it changes where if you're in downtown Seattle, where you have a high population base, or you're in Port Orchard, and why, you know, the need is there to put it on a pole right in a, on a, on a main thoroughfare like Tremont versus setting it off the street a block away. You know, just really understanding the problems that are out there, why this provides a solution, and why it maybe doesn't provide solutions if it's maybe somewhere we're thinking, why can't we bury it over there? So I think there's a natural propensity to say, we don't want these things littering all of our, our beautiful, you know, this new Tremont street, for example, this gateway, and have there be some less than desirable. So maybe just to better understand the impacts to Port Orchard versus the impacts to more of the urban areas. So maybe stakeholders could educate us a little bit on this.
Sure.
I could take that one step further, and I would hope that we could get technical comprehensive footprints of where it's situated.
Yeah, a specific example, though, of here's a problem in Port Orchard that we're facing right now, and so this could be a likely solution for it.
Yeah, but I, you know, I totally agree with you. I mean, we're spending thousands and thousands of dollars to get rid of utilities all of these on Tremont. I hate to turn around and put another pole up on Tremont. But I, I agree with you, if technologically can they prove one block off, it comes to the same thing, but I'm also interested in seeing are we gonna have one of these things every three blocks, or is it every mile, or is it? Where are the holes in the city that they believe we would need to have something there? And my second question, and this is only for Big Arizona, on the technology, you know, way back when, when, when sub towers were, how we had this, you know, Horizon had their tower, and, and Soyo One had their tower, whoever else had their tower at all? You know, that's why we've got three towers to the close proximity of Selfup, they're around the Tremont sixteen area. Are these proprietary? Are we going to anticipate or expect to see, for lack of a better terminology, a, a Verizon tower and a block later, there's gonna be a Sprint tower, you know, whatever, so if you had nice, you know, just technologically is.
And if they co-locate.
Yeah, and if you co-locate, you're shared use of those facilities, so that multiple carriers could use the same.
I think we have the flexibility to look at requiring co-locations, the expense.
Yeah, it's, it's certainly feasible and encouraged. I don't think that it's something that's currently required in this draft. But, yeah, I mean, it's something we can look at as an, an additional requirement, though, you know, obviously three antennas and the equipment for, in support of that on one pole is probably bulkier than, in terms of the look, the appearance of the thing than spreading them out.
It could very well be, and this goes back to Jay's comments, your pictures are worth a thousand, what is a multi-agency pole applied versus a single agent's default, just so we can see a static wave.
Yeah.
Is there a standard for the area or statewide, or is it maybe different by jurisdiction?
So right now, it's, it's different by jurisdiction, and we've been monitoring the legislation that's been moving through the state. And one common theme of, of all of the, the bills that we've seen, at least that, that our lobbyist is, is lobbying on our behalf, would allow that any, any jurisdiction that's already adopted something would be preempting state law versus being forced to amend their local ordinances to comply with any new state law. So by acting now, we're, we're sort of getting in front of something should the state law be more relaxed than what we would want it to be. But, yeah, right now it's a total patchwork from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, and I think that, you know, AWC has been really active in this, and the industry's been active, and they just, they're not, they're still fairly far apart on, on how they want this structured.
Need to touch on James' point, for the Tremont corridor loan, at the eighteen million dollar construction, construction million dollar budget, one million of that is dedicated solely to dry utilities.
That's right, right.
I, I think in, in conjunction with this effort, one of the things that we really need to do, and which is going to take place as part of the zoning code update, because this is only dealing with small cell antennas in the right of way. But right now, it's harder to put a small cell antenna on private property than it would be in the right of way, and so we really need to reverse that to make it more streamlined to be able to put this specifically on top of a building where it would be screened from view or, or on private property on a, on some kind of attractive light standard that has a built-in small cell antenna, but, but right now it, you have to get a conditional use permit to do it on private property versus, and this, obviously a franchise agreement is, you have to get the franchise agreement first, but then after that, it's easier to permit it within the right of way.
So, that was my first observation, that this was just in the right of way, and then I had some other comments. I don't know if you wanna take those later or now, or?
You're on the land, land use committee, right?
Yeah. I believe so. I can, hold on.
Okay. Well, yeah, I think. Okay.
Well, so my understanding is that when you're looking at trying to regulate these, perhaps there's a more of a strategic advantage of approaching this from a zoning code regulation perspective than regulation from a community. And, and so I think that's probably worth talking a little bit more about. Also, I, you know, I observed that this was just for those in the right of way. That. That on page thirty-one, there's, there's a discussion about replacement poles and existing poles, or replacement poles would be replacing a pole that once existed, but there's no discussion about how someone might cite a brand new pole that where it previously existed at all.
Because we have underground, because there are a lot of poles.
Really? You couldn't put in a new pole?
Well, you can, I mean, in terms of a, a power pole, if PSE needs to, you know, if they're upgrading something to.
You could replace the poles, but.
They have, they actually, okay.
New development, you have to underground.
So I, I guess for your.
That's something that's worth talking about, because if you've got a gap that you've got to fill in between two, yeah.
So are, your first question about the zoning approach to regulating these in the right of way, under our existing zoning code and under the proposed zoning code that we're developing, the right of way is not zoned. There is no zone that applies, and so the land use table doesn't allow any land uses within the right of way. You have to get a right of way use permit. And that's, I think, the distinction that it, it's really important to, to separate, because we have a lot more discretion with what we approve in the right of way versus what we approve on, on private property. And so we're really drawing a, a very solid line between what happens in the right of way and what happens on, on private property. And the zoning code deals with private property, with the exception of road standards which are typically created prior to subdivision and then become public roads.
It's an interesting, I learned, or dichotomy, where, you know, the city's moving forward with Schedule seventy fours, which are shared split cost to underground utilities, or we have an ordinance that has development is to underground utilities. And this particular program is kind of contrary to that, it's, it needs.
I think it nicks onto something where we need this tool, but we also need to work with our, our code to incent this on private property.
Yeah, and, and we can.
So that there's another, there's two methods.
There's provisions for us to be able to tell the provider that they have to relocate their facility in the event that we're undergrounding or if we have a road project where something's gotta be moved, and they've asked for, I think, we were gonna give them thirty days notice. They've actually asked for ninety days notice, which I think is probably reasonable, and that's just going from memory. But, but, yeah, I think that, that generally our streetlight, our, our intersection control poles, those could be, you know, outfitted with small cell antennas, but we're actually doing away with a lot of those as part of our roundabout construction. And so I'm not sure how many signals we're actually going to have in the city, and, and specifically signals that aren't part of a state highway. So, so there, there aren't, you know, as things go underground in terms of our power poles, and as we move from signals to roundabouts, there's going to be fewer and fewer opportunities for this. And it is part of our Bethel plans, for instance, if we underground, you know, Bethel, then that's a whole street that there really isn't an opportunity for small cell antennas to be located at, at that location. Yeah.
But we could put the, 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 it could be amended to allow it in private property.
They are allowed, it's just a conditional.
Yeah, a conditional use process, which, so we're here in the examiner, and this is probably.
So not knowing what these things look like, it just doesn't make sense to me, but we're gonna restrict above ground utilities in our right of way that might be over on the property will incentivize a pole to be installed with the series.
A piece of this is why, why we're doing this, is we want our own regulations, what versus what will be potentially imposed on by the state.
I think it's something that we have to work on, but I'm just suggesting that we need to be sensitive to the fact of what we're trying to do with underground utilities, residential quarters, and so on. By the over, we're gonna incentivize the where it could be installed, it's.
So on page thirty-five, there's, there's a discussion of height, and it refers to the, to locals, only. So on page thirty-five, there's a discussion of height and it refers to the, uh, to locals, only regulations for height and color right. So that was a curiosity to me as well.
You said thirty-five?
Yeah.
Which?
Thirty-five, one and two. And then I know that, I think in here I saw that we have somewhere minor deviations, but I think the industry uses a, uses substantial change as it's defined in CFR and maybe S U C regulations, but is fairly explicit when it was used by other jurisdictions as to what you can do. So it creates some additional review, um, but I think that's worth, that's worth looking at.
Okay.
One of the things that I saw here, I wasn't aware, I guess you couldn't put up a new pole, but I hate to see poles that are over-engineered, uh, so that they're a lot wider than they really need to be. And then I had just some other stuff. Those were my comments. And I got that CFR side if you're interested.
Okay, so, um, I think, is everybody comfortable with this going to land use then for further refinement, and then we'll bring it back either June or July?
So I have a couple more questions. Was there any legislation that was passed?
Not that I'm.
Did I hear that maybe the favorite legislation might be that if a provider comes to a jurisdiction, that the jurisdiction has a window of time in which to repair regulations to manage that application?
I'm not sure. Our lobbyist sent me something about two weeks ago that was a revised draft of something that's getting kicked around, but I'm not aware that it's going to be considered before the next session.
Could we entertain, um, some enlightenment from somebody in the audience on that?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, councilmember. My name is Kim Allen. I'm with the wireless policy group of the head of Verizon Wireless. And, uh, no, state legislation did not pass this session. Generally, I think that in the two previous versions in the past two years, there's been a requirement, a requirement, a request for a requirement that cities either adopt a code previously, and if that code is consistent with the state law, that they will be grandfathered in when the state law became effective. That's at least been the trend over the last two years. And, uh, just quickly to answer this councilmember's question, if an area goes underground, we would move our facilities to light standards and we have some really innovative designs to camouflage it within the lights, the general streetlights. Do you have photos? I do provide Nick with photos and, uh, we have a what is small cell presentation that talks about the need. I'll provide Nick with a lot of information that he can share with him.
Thank you. If I may ask you a question, you said you represent Verizon. You guys share these facilities with other providers or is it exclusive to each carrier?
No, actually, at this time, each carrier is given a different part of the spectrum operated from the S U C. And so each carrier's small cell is designed a little bit differently. And so right now, there is no technological and feasible co-location opportunity. A small cell facility, the optimum height for small cell antennas is between twenty-five and forty feet. And so within that, to achieve a separation between two carriers antennas would be very, very difficult. And, um, there's a number of other technological issues that make it not feasible yet to do that. Certainly, you know, we're trying to drive the equipment, the manufacturers to make that happen. You're not the first city to ask about that, but right now, that's not a problem. I mean, that's not a feasible solution.
So what's the distance between carriers if you have to maintain a lot of coverage?
Well, it depends on who the carriers are, as to how much distance. Generally, it's about ten, fifteen feet.
Is it vertical and horizontal or just vertical?
Um, horizontal separation between, um, antenna, between carriers. Once you go much above forty feet.
Right, and I, I, I play my plays and was trying to figure out, we're in right here and how far away is the Sprint, you know, this way.
Councilmember, this is a great question, because each carrier's network right now with macro sites is designed differently. And so different carriers have different macros in different places, so that the likelihood that you're going to get a pole on every block or every other block, especially in Port Orchard, which is not very dense, is probably not very likely. Every carrier would be looking at different poles because their networks are different.
But unfortunately, the density of the city of Port Orchard is changing rapidly.
Oh, indeed it is.
There will be tomorrow, so.
So my following question would be, what is the need? I'm missing something here. Is it to amplify the coverage? Because being a customer, I'm not having any issues.
And there are a couple, there are a number of reasons why we need this. The existing macro network of towers, because of all of the cell phones and all of the devices and everything that we're connecting to that network that we've never connected before, insulin pumps, medical devices, police, uh, first responders radios. All of those devices and the internet of things, as well as people's enormous expansion of data use, is stressing out the macro network. And so you'll get, you'll get a slow speed sometimes, you'll get five hours on your phone, but you can't get to your email. All of those things are requiring us to add additional capacity to the network. You can still make a phone call, but the more data-intensive uses are driving us to infill and also to get closer to where people are using their phones. It used to be you'd go near a phone and blood box in case your car broke down, you'd have a cell phone there, completely different now. So now we have to get up a long driveway, you know, over the hill into the house and down to where you want to use your phone, which is what our customers expect. They expect to be able to use their phone seamlessly everywhere. And so that, that's the goal. And since the advent of the smartphone in two thousand and seven, we have seen a sevenfold increase in the amount of data that our customers want to move to our network. So this is a low visual impact solution that brings the passing closer to the end users in their homes and in their offices. And, um, and works with the tower network, because these are low-power antennas, they don't interfere with the existing tower. So they work in tandem to create more passing.
And along those same lines, I believe the five G network that will be rolling out in a few years requires greater frequency of antennas?
Yes, five G network is being designed right now. In fact, Verizon just announced today the second market for commercial deployment at the end of the year to Los Angeles. We can see out where lobbying may be number three for a lot of that. It's going to be very, very efficient use of data, I mean, movement of data, very high speeds. But the bandwidth that carries that amount of data that quickly don't go very far. And so they will be deployed on a small cell infrastructure. And so if you are setting yourself up with a small cell infrastructure as present for deployment of five G when that becomes available as well.
Do you, in reading this information so far, it suggests that to be able to install one of these sites, you have to have both power and fiber, is that a correct?
Each pole will require power and fiber, which is why the right of way is the preferred location.
So in the case where we don't have fiber everywhere, then it's unlikely that you're extraing a fiber just to get into a hole?
No, actually, we would, and oftentimes, we use third-party fiber providers to do that. And when they're coming in to do the Verizon and the AT&T installation to serve our small cells, they're also bringing fiber into neighborhoods and places that didn't have it before. And the next, at least anecdotally, the next call is sometimes from the fiber provider wanting to sell you some, some, uh, effective uses of that fiber in the neighborhood.
Well, I can attest that the increasing demand will put in our automatic vehicle locating and our, I can see, you can tell if your buses at home are serviced, not that everyone's buses have a cell phone. And we're pulling buses once every two or three seconds, so I'm sure we're putting some demand on your network. I'm sorry, I made you part of the over.
So when do you think something will be ready for land use?
Well, we'll bring the marked-up copy of this to land use for discussion once we've, as staff, have had more time to study the issues and come up with recommendations and figure out what some of these issues actually look like based on the change that's proposed. So it's mostly, you know, I would say, um, the majority of the comments are related to that standard section, I think it's zero six zero. And there's just a few other comments here and there that more relate to process or timelines that are less substantive or at least impactful from a what does it look like standpoint.
I guess there's one more question, I'm curious if anyone else. Is your forecasting or planning for the future to be able to communicate wirelessly through the homes and send whatever the U C says or drop in wires?
Well, I know everybody's working on that, kind of fixed asset wireless. And I know the cable companies are looking at that as well as the wireless carriers. So I, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, but I would say definitely that's something that everybody would like to see happen.
If it does come to fruition, it'd be nice to not have all those wires springing from the poles.
All right, one more comment. Under our next item, I'll try to get this back on track here. The West Sound agreement, this is, this is actually, if I can have this done. The major change from what we really were previously is we have difference of opinion with West Sound as far as whether or not they're a municipality or not. So we had Sharon and West Sound's attorney, uh, work with A W C and give us a ruling, and they are, they consider it a governmental entity, so they're not. That means that they don't have bonding, so we were insisting they provide bonding, uh, and they don't have, because they're government, they don't have to provide bonding, they have a tax base, that we didn't rule, all what we do to do a better job of policing their activity, making sure they're getting permits, and that will take care of this, you know. So we, so we have an agreement now in principle with West Sound, we'll bring it back probably next Tuesday. It's one, you know, currently, we don't, because we don't have a franchise agreement, we don't have the ability, you know, to impose a utility tax on their customers, which are residents of our city. That probably isn't fair to, I think, all of our citizens that are paying the same taxes and.
So I understand.
Well, there's a provision in here that we just have to give them proper notice. And I think we need to identify something, though. I think if we're going to oppose the tax, I think we need to identify something. I think we have a large list, which is short here, we tonight, to cure transportation or sidewalks or something. So, but I think we should be.
What would it be a utility?
It would be utility tax, but it goes into general fund.
If that's what the general, and what's going to the utility?
It's a utility taxes or a general. So, you know, we created the situation where we leveled the playing field between gas and electricity, and I think we should be looking at this from a standpoint of.
I would say we dedicate that if we're able to, 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 because that's what's going to be implemented by.
We can't, I don't, it goes into the general fund.
I appreciate that, but we can also get guidance system.
What the budget process is about, that is absolutely correct.
Even in the creation, I think we could, there's a guidance system where we want the money to go. So there's our business tax, we designated where we, how we want to spend that money, so.
There's nothing to prevent a future council from changing that, but.
Understood.
But I, I feel pretty strongly, if we're going to do this, we need to identify what the need is.
Street projects.
And I.
It could be impacted by the utility filter for some argument, so.
So, uh, we'll just, go ahead. Yes, they have, Randy's Bruce. Oh, Randy's Bruce, that's right, for the last week, yeah.
And so Michael's officially done?
On July first, July was something.
Through June, I think. So if they are doing a street project or something and they have some sort of mishap, so we're, we are tracking that, but.
They still have to get a right-of-way permit.
Yeah, they still have to permit, they start to break bonding, like a contract.
Yeah, so without the bonding, would they be completely liable for any mishaps?
That's what they're, that's what they basically said was, if we hire a contractor to do the work, the contractor will have to get the bond. If we do the work, then we will ensure, we are guaranteeing our.
So they're liable for any problems with the work, basically.
Right, they'll say, and they have the tax, the difference is, R C W that they pointed out is that they have a tax base, and like a contractor who doesn't have a tax base, we need to rely on a bond, maintenance bond. We, what we need to do, though, is be more diligent in driving by six months or a year later to make sure that that.
We'd rather take it to the back that's failing on one sixty-six in front of the, the tail station or whatever that gas station is.
Well, again, there's nothing, if it's asphalt, it's going to be the state that's going to repair that.
Well, it was, it was a hole that was created by one son doing it, because people would want to go along, so it was, it doesn't help the.
Well, no, that, no, that's exactly the issue, but at this juncture, we, there's no recourse, it's.
So moving forward.
Why not?
Why not?
Well, I mean, somebody would have to, but that would be the state, if it's one sixty-six, if it's pavement.
It's caused by.
No, but it would have to be the state that would go to them.
The complaint. So we need to tell the state to tell them.
Right, the state would have to contact them.
So if they're going to open up a state highway, they would have to us for a right-of-way permit?
Yes.
Yes, they would.
They would.
They would. You would have a right-of-way permit on something that we can't force?
Well.
It sounds like to me, Mark, you need to contact the state.
Right, this shall, this thing, I don't know when, what I'm saying is, I think the right-of-way permits are only good for a certain amount of time. That's why it's good to have the bonding in place, because you, it's a two-year bond. Personally, I'd rather have a bond in place.
In our meeting, though, they assured us, they have problems, the problems with the roadway, they're going to fix it.
Well, they're guaranteed in perpetuity.
Well, and maybe as a gesture of goodwill, they'll go out and take care of this, because they said we need to know about these problems, so.
But again, state highways are, we do issue a right-of-way permit, but it gets very convoluted with our C W.
I think we.
But they just need another right-of-way permit and to go and fix it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think if we, that's where our public works, complaint log is for, so if we give those issues to the complaint log, then that's.
I'll take the list.
That's the most efficient way, efficient way for us to deal with this, we've got a tracking mechanism versus us firing things at Mark here.
Getting an.
Should I go back to the utility tech? This is not going to be, we have that in more than one location. There's houses over in the city, and I have to handle this, water is being supplied by the city of Bermerton. Is that the situation where those citizens are not paying the same?
That's not our, that's not our utility tax.
Or is West Sound?
Yeah, we would have to have an agreement with Bremerton to collect out there, I believe, if we're not collecting out.
I did help with this a little bit, we need to do, to be able to have.
We don't have a franchise agreement.
We don't have a franchise agreement with Bremerton. We do now with West Sound, and that was one of the ideas.
Should we ask for a franchise agreement if they're developing in our right of way?
Yeah, I think, yeah, we should, but I think we want to, I mean, we got to look at the prioritization of, we still have.
Cascade gas, other, we've got other.
I only agree with you because there's a hole in our system regardless of what it is, and if we're going to do it over here, we should be doing it in citywide.
Absolutely, we need to, it's just.
Whether it's cascade gas or Bermerton water or West Sound or whoever.
This is the second one. There's half a dozen numbers to do. You're correct.
That's back on that list, except you've got nothing else to do.
At least we have a template now for Bremerton, and we have our template with ways to use for the other.
They require it with her, so it's just kind of, we're on her plate to deal with, so.
I, I appreciate it, but, you know, we will prioritize and get it done. Let's say that's going to be first two, definitely.
We have two good templates.
And I was just pointing out some disparity there, that, and potentially an opportunity to help put some of our sidewalk street needs.
Yeah, sure.
We know some of this, so we'll be bringing this back next week. So, next item is the parade. I tried to get creative, I talked to the police department, and, uh, unfortunately, it would take, I go, I understand back windows don't come down on our police vehicles, so. Not voluntarily, that's right. So it would require seven police vehicles, and we can't get that many police vehicles at one location. Not voluntarily, that's right. So it would require seven police vehicles and we can't get that many police vehicles out of one location. So I was thinking we, so that was my creative idea for the parade was police vehicles.
I won't be here, but I think you guys should skateboard.
I don't either, so I, I, I don't.
Okay, so that's, that's what this is about is what do we want? Do we want to enter in the parade and what do we want to do in the parade?
Number four.
Number four, uh, two.
I'm gone.
I'm about to go first.
Oh, okay. All right.
I'm gone.
That's what makes the show.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Plus we have posters in the car.
Don't bring a cut out.
Yeah, you could do.
Two years ago the blue and I put, I put John's face on one of them and.
Yeah, that's because I could keep up with everybody.
Yeah, you can get life size cut outs of each person and then just have somebody carry them.
With an arm that weighs, yeah, great weight. So what I'm hearing, yes, there's four.
We have four of the, the water contractors where they.
Four remaining. Do you want to, do you want to have a parade entry? I'm fine if you don't. Fred's saying no. John's saying no. Okay, all right.
I just, in another respect, I appreciate you. So we're all there. Thank you.
All right. Did you, were you going to talk about this, the sidewalk thing?
I got it on my list.
Just asking.
Busy order. I'm going to get there. All right.
Now for the rest of the meeting.
All right. So I, I, you know, I went on vacation, so I still got things. I'm trying to catch up with them. So.
Why is that our problem?
Okay, I'm sorry to be ready to go, but I've got a few things here. One of them is Mark's sidewalk. Okay, so I get this, we had that Jurassic Parliament, uh, meeting that we all did one year is, uh, we can have a retreat, we did this. Um, so I get a newsletter. So one of the things that I thought was interesting here is the, the recommendation is friendly amendments are a horrible idea. And I just, that was a fresh wound. We have to leave it back. So we should do friendly, friendly amendments because they usually don't work. But the real reason I brought this forward was, uh, a, a, it's something we could, I could use if you guys wanted me to, to facilitate our meetings is that the, it's called unanimous consent. So many times we've got things on the consent agenda and we have things that really nobody has any questions about. And I can pretty much sense that it's going to pass, you know, unanimously. So with unanimous consent, I would ask, is, is, for the proposal, is there any objection? And if anybody did have an objection or wanted a more formal process, they would say, I eject. Okay? And you guys can all shake their heads and go, no, I don't want anything to do with this.
What is it going to accomplish?
So if anyone remains silent, then your silence is consent.
But for what item?
For a business item.
Why would you just leave it in the consent agenda?
I mean, everything goes in sense. So did he pull off consent? Is that what?
No, you're talking about on the business agenda. You're saying on the business agenda.
If you're, if it be a business item, so I would say, for a proposed action, I would say, is there any objection? And you're, and you're, if no one objects, then your silence is affirmation.
So you would say that before every business item, not as a whole?
Potentially. But so many times though, you guys will start asking questions. In that scenario, I would not use this tool.
So would you still have staff read it into the record?
Yes. Everything would be the same. It's when the motion is made and a second is made. And then I say, are there any questions? And then I guess if I get silence, nobody has any questions.
But then we always go to the vote anyway.
I know. Okay, I'll put it away.
Yeah.
Nice.
Don't go on.
All right, well, good.
Did you pick up that idea in Mexico?
You know what? It did come, it did come to me a lot. But it came to me in an email. All right, moving on. Okay, Mark, a short interim solution with Mark's staffing is that we found a consulting company that is going to provide us, it's called an engineer in training, somebody with a degree that hasn't had their stamp yet. We've identified somebody. So in the next, it'll be next week.
June twelfth.
June twelfth, we're going to write a contract forward for that. It'll allow us to continue to try to recruit. We'll get this person in the door too, and we, and we might need to tweak this job description we have.
Is this the three, two? Yeah, this, we were going for.
We still haven't gotten a meeting, but.
It's the one position.
It's the one same position. And so we've got to get somebody in to help with.
They're an EIT.
Of EIT.
It's an engineering firm that's going to provide an EIT?
Yeah, we're going to have to consult. And, and then, and I had to contact six engineering firms that are either here Tacoma just to even get that service because they're all recruiting heavily too.
Right.
And so right now civil engineering is paying top dollar. Everybody's looking. One firm told me that City of Bellingham is actually paying twenty-nine dollars an hour just for interns just because they're so backlog. So.
What did it stress for an inch?
Contact the university.
We have, well, we followed.
And that's what we're, that's what we're posting, we're pushing this job up to is we're looking for.
Well, I agree. How many jobs are just permanent interns or?
Well.
During summer break.
Part of our problem is we don't have time to train somebody and.
No, but you can get, you know, engineers in training out of the university that's in their last few years.
Well, we are, I mean, that's what we're.
That's what we're talking about is we may need to tweak.
Well, we're going to be paying engineering firms to use one of their.
In, in the short run.
In the short.
So as we come into the budget process, we'll get this person in the door and see how this is working. We, we may need to tweak this for engineering tech to something exactly what you're saying.
Will we have an open recruitment during that?
Yeah, we're still recruiting.
Yeah, we're still trying to recruit somebody. We just can't get anybody and we need some help.
So I appreciate we need to know. This is a stopgap, but.
This is what we want to do longer term.
No, and the city of Bremerton has already milked the Olympic College Engineering Program and they struck out. Because Ned Lieber actually took their professors out to lunch and trying to get some of those guys out of the apprenticeship program. And so we've like turned over every stone. So this is really, this is a stopgap.
So more to come, but we're going to get a contract in place for some help immediately. And then finance committee members after the meeting can stick around for five minutes, which I guess they get your calendars out. Town hall meeting on the plastic garbage bag twenty ninth. I've got Chris Gerito, county is considering their own ban. I feel it's probably appropriate to include the county in this process. Chris Gerito is going to come also. And she's got Chris Piercy from the solid waste division of the county too, just to give us information on impacts to the waste stream.
What time is that?
It'll, what time is it? I was thinking six thirty is when we normally start.
Are you going to have a retailer there to also?
We've invited, we've invited them. And Matt Murphy's been working that. I don't know that we will. They, they don't seem interested. And, and, and really the bottom line is it's us as consumers that'll pay for this because you paid for the paper bank.
You should.
Or irreusable. So we are reaching out and we've invited the box stores, retailers. They've been ho-hum about it.
Many, many of the box stores have facilities in jurisdictions that have already implemented this. So they have a strategy about to deal with it. It'll probably be someone like Costco where you go up there and they check your, you know, your, your invoice to what's in your vest.
It's an information gathering session. Chance or community speak up about it. So I thought that because of great opportunity to have a town hall meeting.
You should include plastic straws because, you know, Seattle's banned plastic straws.
You go back to your corner.
Plastic straws.
Yeah.
All right. So Mark's issue, street trees. So.
No, it's not street trees.
What is that?
It's sidewalks.
It's, it's, it, it, okay, it's street, it's, it is. So we have, um, we don't enforce our code. And, and it's a conscious decision at least by prior councils. Our code says that the sidewalk in front of a house belongs to that residence. And we enforce that to businesses and governmental entities. We have an instance here recently where, I think it's on Cal Street where sidewalks buckle in due to the cherry trees. Public Works came to me and said, should we take the trees out? And I said, absolutely, but we got to replace them. And we, you know, and we've got to do that before we fix the sidewalk. Because otherwise you're going to report the sidewalk and it's the wrong type of trees and they're buckling the, the sidewalk up. So Mark, Mark would like the city council to reconsider its position and on this.
Or restate. So on July fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, I came to a work study. And I talked about sidewalk repair and maintenance responsibility. And at that point I talked about municipal code twelve, twelve, oh, three, oh, oh, six, six. And RCW thirty-five, seven, which clearly states that the adjacent property owner is responsible. I brought in pictures and examples of city Seattle or the jurisdictions that send out a ninety day notice. You know, you've got a sidewalk that's doing this and all these big huge trees and they either, if they do the work, they assess the, the property owner. And so I came to council and said, our code matches the state code. And so, um, what do you want me to do? And at that time, the, the direction was to basically government entities and commercial, we will send out notices for private residences. The city would, would address those. And I'm just wanting to, now that we have some additional changes or we have changes in the council, I think, before continuing with that practice, I'm just looking for a nod ahead saying, yeah, just continue.
Well, so that's one of the retreat items I wanted to talk about. Does it want to be worth talking about more retreat?
Sure. Okay. RCW thirty-five, seven. And then it's Panis of code twelve, twelve, oh, three, oh, dash, oh, six, oh.
Twelve, twelve.
Bremerton enforces. And there's current guidance.
Um, that got into a whole big tits out sun battle between the city and the residents.
Your phone is going to ring and you're sorry.
You said, you said in that meeting that this political suicide, and I remember that.
It is.
Well, our current practice is to, our.
Yeah, we fix, the city fixes this.
City does.
No, we fix it when it comes to our attention. So remember we have the Mulligan Rule. So that's what we call it.
What was it? Code said again on that? Twelve, twelve?
Twelve, twelve, oh, three, oh, dash, zero, six, zero. And it was adopted pursuant to ordinance thirteen, fifteen in nineteen eighty-five.
And I'm, I'm more interested in, in the less severe maintenance. So I'm sure where you do the grow up that kind of stuff. Could there be a cost sharing approach to something like this? I mean, we the city.
Yeah, we go out and replace panels. We're, we're basically doing more.
So it sounds like we're going to take this up.
Is it a cost sharing system? I mean, banks for us to go out and take the sidewalk?
Well, from a liability standpoint, but realistically.
The whole city is paying for a problem within a few houses.
That they may have planted.
No.
No.
We planted these trees.
There's green trees.
But again, there's, there's.
And we have planted necessarily the right types of trees.
Well, okay, in that instance.
And that's such a way to define us.
Yeah, that's, that's honest.
That's a little different. But you're talking about trees a hundred, thirty, forty years ago.
Right, they didn't have tree by tree.
They didn't have the root boxes that were contained.
But we have, we have some trees in the garden court that we do care.
Those were in the right of way, yes. But we, we didn't do all of them. There were trees also that were the property owners and they took care of those. But again, that was a, Garden Court's a very unique situation. The trees weren't little maple trees. They were thirty, thirty foot diameter cedar trees.
So the mayor, mayor's pay for the public works.
Huge.
Yeah. All right. So we'll talk about this more at the retreat and then it's maybe we can get together and go for five minutes and figure out a date.
Sliding meeting for four items.